Sergeant Hannah, if you could please start your recording. And Sergeant Perez, please start your recording.
Recording started.
Cloud recording also beginning. And good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing on the Committee of Finance. At this time, would all panelists please turn on their video for verification? Once again, all panelists, please turn on your videos for verification. To minimize disruption, please place all electronic devices on vibrate or silent mode. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you so much for your cooperation. Chair Drum, we are ready to begin.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning and welcome to today's Finance Committee meeting. I am Councilmember Daniel Drum, and I'm Chair of the Committee. We have been joined by several colleagues who were here with us today. And they are Majority Leader Combo, Minority Leader Matteo, Councilmembers Adams, Rosenthal, Amprey Samuel, Gredenchik, Ayala, Moya, Jonai, Karen Koslowitz. And we are also joined, of course, by our Attorney General Letitia James and Senator Leroy Comrie, as well as Assemblymember David Webber. Can you see me?
Yes, we can see you now, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to repeat that?
No, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I just need to switch to something then before we start, and I will pull it up in a moment. Bear with me. Okay. I'm going to turn it over to our Committee Council to go over some procedural items. Committee Council, would you please go over those items now?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Stephanie Reeves, and I am New York City's Council's Committee on Finance. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are recognized to speak, at which time you will be unmuted by the Zoom host. If you mute yourself after you have been unmuted, you will need to be unmuted again by the host. I will now hand it back to Chair Drum.
Thank you. Today, the Committee will be considering two pieces of legislation with the aim of providing greater protections to property owners in New York City. The two pieces of legislation are Intro 2039, which would authorize the extension of deadlines for the filing of applications and renewal applications for certain real property tax abatement and exemption programs, and Resolution Number 1387 sponsored by Councilmember Adams, which supports a piece of state legislation that would postpone the New York City 2020 tax lien sale until one year after the COVID-19 state of emergency has been lifted. Let's begin with Intro 2039. This bill would extend the deadline for the filing of an application or a renewal application due in calendar year 2020 from March 16, 2020 to July 15, 2020 for certain real property tax exemption or tax abatement programs. These programs include the senior citizen homeowner's exemption, disabled homeowner's exemption, the veterans exemption, and the alternative veterans exemption, the school tax relief exemption, the disabled crime victim Good Samaritan exemption, the clergy exemption, and the cooperative and condominium property tax abatement. This bill is being considered pursuant to the authority granted to the city via Chapter 92 of State Laws of 2020, originally sponsored in the Senate by Senator Comrie, permitting such an extension. According to the memo in support of the state bills, the state legislation was conceived because COVID-19 virtually shut down the normal order of business, including gatherings of people at workshops, seminars, and in-person visits to offices to normally assist people navigating technical matters like filing, like filling out real property tax abatement application renewal documents. Therefore, the state determined that a three-month extension of the deadline was warranted. Even though it passed, even though it is passed July 15, this bill will allow the Department of Finance to approve hundreds of applications that were submitted prior to that date. Without this legislation, these seniors, people with disabilities, and vets would have to wait until next year to receive the property tax benefit, rather than receiving it this year. Next, we have Resolution Number 1387 sponsored by Councilmember Adams. This resolution would support the passage of Senate 8921 sponsored by Senator Leroy Comrie that would postpone the city's lien sale until at least one year after the COVID-19 state of emergency declaration. Since the drafting of the resolution, Assemblymember David Webber has sponsored the companion Assembly Bill A10961. Before I invite Councilmember Adams to speak about her resolution, I would like to address today's absence of any witnesses from the administration. Representatives of the Department of Finance, the Department of Environmental Protection, and the Department of Housing Preservation and Development were all invited to testify today. But unfortunately, the administration has chosen not to send anyone to provide testimony or answer any of our questions. We were eager to discuss the two pieces of legislation, but most importantly, to hear about the mayor's decision to postpone the lien sale again until September 25. Over the past week, there has been a lot of news about the lien sale. There was the mayor's decision to postpone it, the issuance of the governor's executive order purporting to delay it even further, and public discussion about the impact of the limited outreach conducted by DLF over the past few weeks. This would have been an excellent opportunity for the administration to explain the rationale behind its policies and clear up any confusion that may have arisen as a result of the shifting plans. The effect of this year's annual tax lien sale is an important topic, one that must not be avoided or forestalled as it stands to impact thousands of New Yorkers, many already hard-hit by the COVID-19 pandemic. The Council will be sending a letter to the administration containing the questions that we had originally planned to ask at this hearing, and we hope they will provide an expeditious response. I will now turn the mic over to Councilmember Adrian Adams for her remarks. Councilmember Adams, and we've also been joined by Councilmember Lansman.
Thank you so much, Chair Drum. Good morning, everyone. First again, I'd like to thank Chair Drum for allowing me to deliver comments about Resolution 1387. I also give thanks to Senator Leroy Comrie and Assemblymember David Webber for their legislation at the state level and their tireless partnership in Southeast Queens. I also thank our Attorney General Letitia James for her steadfast leadership and assistance in the executive order issued by Governor Cuomo. Right now, the New Yorkers are suffering from the financial impacts of COVID-19. They're struggling with food insecurity, loss of income, and many are afraid that they will lose what they have worked their whole lives for, their homes. It is outrageous that the administration did not bother to attend today's hearing. Failing to appear with full knowledge of the dire situation that property owners are currently facing is completely unacceptable and speaks volumes as New Yorkers are experiencing unprecedented hardship. Last week, the governor issued an executive order postponing the lien sale until October. This morning, my team received an email from the Department of Finance indicating the lien sale would be conducted on September 25. In fact, New York City's 311 website still reflects the September date. As the Department of Finance failed to appear today to discuss this matter and misinformation on the sale data still being disseminated, are we left to believe that the administration intends to move forward in violation of the governor's order? The $1,000 threshold for the lien sale was set in the 90s and has not been adjusted to account for inflation at all. This means that property owners face liens for minuscule debts, which will quickly balloon once sold to private investors. This is what property owners on the lien sale face right now and what the administration likes to call, quote, "the fairest big city." Outside of the clear financial hardships that residents currently face due to COVID-19, appropriate outreach on outstanding debts was impossible. Even though these debts were not incurred during the pandemic, how can anyone enter a payment arrangement at this time if they're unemployed or have been devastated financially because of this pandemic? The 2020 lien sale was postponed, but it doesn't go far enough. The revenue generated from the sale will not offset the harm inflicted on our communities, and we cannot compound the current problems of New Yorkers. I'd like to thank, again, the members of the Coalition for Affordable Homes for being on the forefront of this conversation, and again, my colleagues in government, Attorney General Letitia James, Senator Leroy Comrie, Assemblymember David Webber for standing up in solidarity to protect New York City property owners. Thank you, Chair Drum.
Thank you very much. And before I proceed, I'd like to announce that we've been joined by Councilmembers Lewis, Carnegie, and Powers. We are also grateful to be joined by Attorney General Letitia James, Senator Leroy Comrie, Assemblymember David Webber, who was the Chair of this committee not too long ago. And I look forward to hearing their testimony, as well as the testimony of the members of the public who have signed up to testify. I will now ask the Committee Council to call up the witnesses. Let's begin now.
Thank you. As a reminder to the witnesses, you will be on mute until it is time for you to testify, at which time your name will be called on and you will be unmuted by the Zoom host. If you mute yourself, after which you've been unmuted, you'll need to be unmuted again by the host. If any Councilmembers have questions for any witnesses, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and you will be added to queue, and I'll recognize you after witness has finished speaking. We'll start by hearing from Attorney General Letitia James, followed by Senator Leroy Comrie and Assemblymember David Webber.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Drum and members of the Committee. My name is Letitia James, Attorney General of the great state of New York. It's very nice to see so many familiar faces today. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you to testify in support of Resolution 1387 sponsored by one of my sheros, Councilmember Adrian Adams, and supported in the state legislature by my also, my very good friend, Senator Leroy Comrie, and in the Assembly, Assemblymember David Webber. With this resolution, lawmakers in Albany will know where the people of New York stand and that this committee and this council will stand up to protect ownership at this critical, homeownership at this critical time when so many New Yorkers are hurting because of the pandemic. And that is why I urge the governor to issue an executive order to stop the lien sale from moving forward. The order was issued on Friday, effectively revoking the authority of localities to sell liens and delaying any such sale until at least October 3. And I have stated publicly that if any city moves to sell liens before that date, my office will take immediate legal action to enforce the executive order. The COVID-19 pandemic ripped through New York City's neighborhoods like a terrible violent storm. Its destructive wrath came down hardest on working-class communities, largely communities of color, the very same communities that many of our essential workers call home. 24,000 of our neighbors became sick and died. Many more lost their jobs, and many more are struggling to hold on. It's unconscionable that amid this backdrop of suffering, New York City would move forward with the tax lien sale. As a City Councilmember who formerly represented Fort Greene, Clinton Hill, parts of Crown Heights, Prospect Heights, and Bedford-Stuyvesant, and then the entire city as public advocate, I've seen the destructive power of the lien sale, its power to destroy wealth or transfer wealth, its power to destabilize whole blocks and communities. It saddens me to see how the weight of the lien sale falls heaviest on communities of color, in particular, black and brown communities that have long been denied their share of the American dream, families that have fought and worked so hard to put that first stake in the ground, to advance to the next rung, to own their home and to build wealth, not just for themselves, but for future generations. To move forward with the lien sale is an act of gross indifference to this struggle and to this history. It angers me to see a map of where the lien sale properties are located and to compare it with a map of racial and ethnic makeup, and then to compare this map with the communities that had the highest rate of COVID-19 infections and deaths. They all correlate to one another. We are failing these communities. This is the tale of two cities that the mayor once spoke of. Part research has shown that a lien is six times more likely to be sold in a majority-black neighborhood than in a majority-white neighborhood, and twice as likely to be sold in a majority Hispanic neighborhood than a white neighborhood. This year's lien sale is no different with most properties located in majority-minority neighborhoods like Bed-Stuy, Flatbush, Brownsville, Jamaica, St. Albans, Wakefield, and the North Shore of Staten Island. These neighborhoods are still recovering from the last financial housing crisis. Predatory lenders devastated these neighborhoods 12 years ago, and now they are facing a new round of predatory debt collection via the lien sale. Why do I call it predatory debt collection? Because once a lien is sold, a homeowner is first hit with a 5% surcharge and then a 9% interest rate that compounds daily. This is how a relatively small debt can quickly balloon and become insurmountable. And while most homeowners with a lien sale are able to avoid foreclosure, they are still put under extreme financial distress. They are often targeted by scammers who feed off of this distress. These are individuals who are basically bottom feeders. Others may feel they have no choice but to make a short sale. In any case, the equity that took decades to build can easily be erased in just a few years. All too often, these homes are then snatched up by real estate speculators and house flippers. In this way, the lien sale facilitates the transfer of wealth from individuals and families struggling to get by to the investor class, the greatest transfer of wealth that we've witnessed in a long time. There are over 9,000 properties on this year's lien sale list. Of the most concern are the 4,700 small homes on the list, many of which are likely to be owner-occupied. There are almost 49 nonprofit properties on the lien sale list, many of them belonging to houses of worship. In years past, the city has done extensive outreach to property owners on the list to make sure they are aware of the danger they are in and to try to get these owners into payment plans to avoid having their liens sold. But this year has been different. COVID has put severe constraints on the intensity of outreach and communication with property owners, and many homeowners has fallen through the cracks. In fact, in some cases, it's been non-existent. It is a risk we cannot afford to take. At the onset of the pandemic, I directed my office to suspend the collection of student loan and medical debt to the state and referred to the Office of Attorney General for collection. The decision for me was an easy one. It is simply wrong to force debt collection at this time. Too many families are hurting. It is no different with the lien sale. We cannot put the homes and financial well-being of 4,700 families at risk. I want to conclude by observing that the local law authorizing the lien sale expires at the end of this year, and it will require an act of the council to reauthorize it. While we are discussing the lien sale here today because of the pandemic, we must also look beyond this moment and realize the opportunity for reform. The lien sale was created in 1996, when New York was a much different city. Since then, we've seen the community preserving potential of land trust. We can find a better way, a fairer way, to collect tax and water debt. We can stop tossing small homeowners into the clutches of private debt collectors charging high, sky-high interest rates. Apartment buildings can be turned into affordable housing. We can focus on outcomes that strengthen neighborhoods rather than undermine them, and we can stop a further increase in the number of homeless in our city. I commend Councilmember Adams for her leadership, and I commend all of my colleagues in government and this committee and this chair for taking this important step in protecting homeownership and stopping the greatest transfer of wealth that we've seen in some time. I will work to ensure that our partners in Albany hear the call and pass legislation to postpone the sale. Until then, my office will be vigilant in, again, stopping any municipality from selling any tax liens. I urge passage of this resolution, but I also urge passage in Albany. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Attorney General. I have a few questions for you. I know that last week you issued a joint statement along with Governor Cuomo, or actually, an executive order along with Governor Cuomo to further delay the lien sale. What have you heard from constituents and advocates across the state on what differences there might be between the lien sale in New York City and other parts of the state?
Primarily, the focus of this resolution is limited to New York City. And at this point in time, the lien sale right now is just pending in the city of New York. And so we are focusing our efforts on basically what is happening in New York City. In upstate New York, we have engaged in a number of preservation efforts with allies in upstate New York. We provided and created home land trust. We've provided additional resources as a result of settlement monies to a number of affordable housing entities in upstate New York. We are working with land trusts. We are working with municipalities in upstate New York to create homeownership opportunities and to preserve affordable housing, unlike what is happening in New York City. And that is, we have an administration, unfortunately, which has demonstrated gross indifference to the damage that this lien sale will have on homeownership and in particular, in communities of color.
Attorney General, I know that in your testimony, you mentioned 1996 as the date when lien sales went in to effect. I believe that's what you said.
Yes.
But are there any, and I think you criticized that and want to look at that, are there any circumstances under which you would reconsider reauthorizing the lien sale prior to 2021 or in general, overall statewide?
Mr. Chair, as you know, as the public advocate, we negotiated with the city of New York to remove one, two, and three homes to ensure that not-for-profits were not included on the list. There were a number of reforms that we put forward. Unfortunately, most of the reforms that we negotiated with this administration are not reflected on the lien sale. The lien sale, as you know, and as I have said publicly, is riddled with errors. And it's for that reason, in addition to the damage that it will cause during this period of the pandemic, that it be delayed.
I think you know also that the administration, or at least the Department of Finance, has argued that without the lien sale, they possibly face 150 or so million-dollar loss in terms of revenue to the city at this time. That impact could be serious during this time of pandemic. What is your feeling about that?
The loss to homeowners, I think, cannot be quantified. And it's really critically important that at this point in time, our concern be about, again, community preserving and about ensuring that homeowners are kept in their home and that we do not transfer this wealth and destroy the equity that they have built up. Right now, we are anticipating and hoping that the federal government will provide resources to New York City, as well as to the state of New York during this period of time. But I do not think that we should balance this budget or be concerned with regards to resources on the backs of these homeowners.
You know, the differences that you alluded to in your testimony are quite stark in sense of who is being hit the hardest with the lien sales. I looked at the numbers myself in preparing for this hearing today, and members like Councilmember Adams had upwards of 200 or so lien sales, maybe other members close to 300 possible lien sales. And then I looked at a district like mine. Now, granted, we have more co-ops than we do single-family homes, but it was my district only has 41. So can you elaborate more on the impact that would have on communities of color? Because those other districts are primarily communities of color.
Yeah, it's, again, all you have to do is take a map of the devastating impact that occurred during the economic struggles when we were facing the significant number of foreclosures. You look at the number of foreclosures, you look at where the lien sales are, and you also look at those communities that have been hit hardest by COVID-19. And clearly, there's a correlation between all three of those. And we should not be adding to the destruction that has already happened as a result of the economic downturn that we experienced in the early 90s. What we should be doing is creating more opportunities to preserve middle-class, working-class communities, as well as communities of color. And we should not be using the excuse that we need to go forward because we need additional revenue.
Has your office seen any predatory lending activity or deed fraud or mortgage fraud surrounding the properties in the lien sale?
Yes, we've seen a significant increase in deed theft in the city of New York. And as you know, we dedicated an entire weekend to reaching out to those communities. Again, it's the same communities that will be impacted by this lien sale that have been victimized by deed theft. We've been working, again, with this administration, as well as with the state of New York, to protect homeowners against deed theft, which has ramped in the city of New York.
Yeah, a good friend of mine was a victim of that as well many, a number of years ago. Just terrible how they swiped her house away from her and her mother, her elderly mother. Incredible. That's it for me, Attorney General, for my questions. I don't know if there are any other. I don't believe that there are at this point. Okay, so I think what we'll do now is that we'll go to Council, to Senator Leroy Comrie for testimony, and then Assemblymember Webber. Thank you, Attorney General.
Thank you.
Senator Comrie?
Good morning. Good morning, Councilmember Drum. I want to begin by thanking you, Councilman Drum, who's always been a good friend, and the members of the Finance Committee for providing me an opportunity to speak about Council Resolution 1387 and my companion bill in the state Senate and in the Assembly. My companion bill, Senate 8921, and the Assembly Bill by Assemblymember Webber, 1010961, which would postpone the 2020 lien sale until one year after the COVID-19 state of emergency has been lifted. As you know, I represent Southeast Queens. When COVID-19 struck our city, thousands of nurses, home health aides, transit workers, and other essential workers met the challenge of the moment and led our city out of one of the worst crises that we have ever faced. Many others have lost income, jobs, and especially loved ones. Many of these people, in fact, a disproportionate number of people who were affected so personally by the pandemic live in the outer boroughs that are now being most affected by this lien sale. In the months since the worst of the COVID-19 outbreak, we have all endeavored to do what we can to help New Yorkers recover, but our recovery is far from over. Today, we face the challenge of preventing a lien sale that will only further destabilize our communities and the families within them. And like we experienced with COVID-19, it is the people of Senate District 14 and other minority communities that face the biggest threat from the lien sale, as been stated so eloquently by our Attorney General. The depths on thousands of Class 1 tax properties are scheduled to be sold also to predatory debt collectors whose interests do not lie in what's best for the debt collectors whose interests do not lie in what's best for New York City, but only for their profit margin. And what's best for their profit margin is to push and intimidate these homeowners into foreclosure. In the middle of a pandemic when unemployment has shattered records and uncertainty about the future is at an all-time high, handing the keys to over 7,000 New York City properties to unscrupulous debt collectors is a recipe for disaster. I want to thank Attorney General Letitia James, Assemblymember Weprin, Councilmember Adrian Adams, the Coalition for Affordable Homes, Housing Advocates, and Property Owners to create this opportunity to have this resolution today and also the two bills that are in the state legislature, something that is so reasonable. I can't believe it hasn't happened yet. Let's push the lien sale back to one year after the expiration of the state of emergency. Because of the pandemic, we haven't been able to provide enough opportunity for affected property owners to rectify their debts ahead of the lien sale. Too many people still don't know that their properties are even at risk. It's only through the fact that we have had press conferences over the last two weeks and have raised our voices that people are even aware that they may be in trouble. Too many homeowners, even with a couple of in debt, at risk of foreclosure. This is not right. This is not a just thing that can happen. This lien sale should not happen, especially now while we're going through this pandemic. Thanks to Attorney General Letitia James and Governor Cuomo, this past Friday, affected property owners were spared the harassment of debt collectors and the fear that comes with housing insecurity that they're still dealing with every day. I'm asking you to please pass the resolution in your City Council, 1387, and which would support my Senate bill and Assemblymember's legislation, Assemblymember Weprin's legislation in the State Senate, in the State Assembly, that would defer the lien sale until after the pandemic. We need to give people time to consult with attorneys, to work with the Department of Finance in their limited schedule because of the pandemic, which is understandable, to create the payment agreements and to learn about exemption programs. Otherwise, we are putting bounties on the homes of thousands of middle-class homeowners throughout our city. Again, I want to just be very clear that this is very important to us. I'm very disappointed that the administration has not worked with us in good faith. I heard clearly what the Attorney General has said about looking at, making sure that we end this lien sale practice. The Tax Commission is meeting later this year. I hope to work with the City Council members to make sure that we change how this lien sale and this debt sale is going. I want to thank all of you Councilmembers, especially the Councilmembers that have signed on to the resolution already, and I'm sure that this will pass the Council. But we also need to look at the deed theft. We also need to look at the other issues that are taking properties away from our homeowners that are struggling to make things happen. Councilman Drum, you asked a question about, you know, what would happen with the money. That money that they are attempting to collect would stay circulating within the city. These small homeowners are in-city people. They're city residents. They're essential workers. They're spending their money within the city limits. To try to take this and enact this deed sale by September 25th is inconscionable by the mayor's office. And I want to thank the Attorney General for being very clear that she's not going to let that happen. And I know that if we continue to work together as a team on all levels of government, we can make sure that our homeowners will not get hurt during this pandemic when most of them are struggling to even pay the rent and maintain services. Again, I want to thank you, Councilman Drum, my colleague, and Ashiro, and a great person, Councilmember Adams, for introducing the legislation, and all my familiar faces in the City Council. Thank you very much for putting this resolution forth, and I look forward to its passing, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and the Affordable Housing Coalition so that we can make sure that we can get rid of this lien sale altogether. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Comrie. It's always good to see you. We're going to go right to Assemblymember David Weprin, and then we have questions for both of you. So let's go to Assemblymember Weprin now.
Good morning, Chair Drum. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's a great pleasure for me to rejoin you again. I always get a pleasure out of coming back to the City Council, although it's a little different remotely, but certainly still I have very fond memories of chairing your committee for eight years from 2002 through 2009. And I want to thank you for your leadership as Finance Chair and for working together with me and so many other colleagues on so many issues of importance to the city of New York. I also, I'm here to testify on behalf of Resolution 1387 introduced by one of my Councilmembers, Adrian Adams, in support of Senator Comrie's legislation, Senate 8921, and my bill in the Assembly, 10961, to postpone the New York City tax lien sale until one year after the COVID-19 state of emergency has been lifted in the state of New York. I'd like to especially thank Councilwoman Adams for inviting me to speak today, Senator Comrie for cosponsoring the legislation in the Senate, and our dynamic Attorney General, who we heard from earlier, Letitia James, for not only joining us today and last Monday at our press conference in support of postponing the tax lien sale, but also for the actions that she has taken in conjunction with the governor to have the lien sale delayed so far. I have come here today to speak on behalf of the hundreds of homeowners. On behalf of the hundreds of homeowners in my assembly district who will be affected by this lien sale as well as by the thousands of homeowners across Queens and across the entire city who will be severely impacted by this lien sale if it's allowed to proceed. As I said at our press conference last week, it is absolutely unconscionable to hold a tax lien sale in the midst of this pandemic and during one of the largest economic slowdowns in our city's history. The amount gained from proceeding with this sale now will be so minimal compared to what will be lost from both a human and financial standpoint. This sale, as we just heard, will place people who are already struggling in the hands of debt collectors and unscrupulous creditors will then be able to be placed with further financial pressure and strain on those already burdened homeowners. It will add to the city's strain with, according to the city comptroller, Scott Stringer, spending $3.2 billion each year on homelessness. Most significantly, will push the owners of, to be exact, 3901 residential Class 1 properties and 1393 Class 2 properties like condos and co-ops into a terrible situation where they're in danger of losing the roof over their head. These numbers are not insignificant. I myself have a significant number of those properties in my assembly district as well as throughout Queens. While I appreciate the postponements to date made by the city of New York and the most recent actions taken by our Attorney General and Governor Cuomo, it is imperative that we postpone this sale until after this pandemic has passed and people are on firmer footing. To close, I would like to, I'd like to look forward to making sure that we pass this legislation as soon as we get to Albany in the Assembly and Senate. And once again, I would like to thank my colleague in government, Councilwoman Adrian Adams, for her sponsorship of this resolution, as well as my colleague in the legislature, Senator Comrie. So I urge you to pass this resolution, and we should postpone the tax lien sale until a year after this pandemic ends. Thank you, Chairman Drum.
Thank you very much. And let me start off with a few questions, and then we have some others who want to ask questions as well. So Resolution 1387 supports the passage of Senate Bill 8921 sponsored by Senator Comrie and Assembly Bill 10961 sponsored by yourself, Assemblymember Weprin, which would prohibit New York City's tax lien sale for one year after the COVID-19 state of emergency has been lifted. Can either or both of you explain why you wanted to have it with just the one-year extension?
Well, we...
I'll start.
Go ahead, Senator.
Yeah, I'll start. Again, I want to, you know, thank the Affordable Homes for bringing this to our attention that we had so many errors on the lien sale, that there were nonprofits on the lien sale, that there were churches on the lien sale, that there were properties on the lien sale that shouldn't have been listed at all, that were an error. You know, we understand that because of the pandemic, the Department of Finance was not able to do the due diligence that it normally does, that it hadn't been able to work with our offices to do evening meetings or, you know, even set up in the meet, to clear up these errors. But we wanted to acknowledge that these errors were important to be highlighted, that it's important that they acknowledge that the entire list needed to be reformatted. So we just felt that it would take at least a year for them to get back on their footing. And then we could also take another hard look at the entire reason why we're even having this type of lien sale with such predatory rates and, you know, trying to change the, even a focus on the lien sale because the money that they, again, these are homeowners. These are homeowners that are staying in the city. They don't have second homes in the Hamptons. They're struggling to make ends meet. They're spending their dollars within the city. They're raising families within the city. Now, we needed to give them a special circumstance during this pandemic, and we need to really look at the entire lien sale issue and to try to get it away from predatory lenders. It's shameful and disgraceful that the city is allowing predatory debt collectors to go after the people that are most impoverished in the city. They should be going after the Trumps and the Vernados and the folks with major property managers that are, you know, getting away with ripping off our residents, not the small homeowners. So we need to take a hard look at this. So we wanted to take it and postpone it for one year after the state of emergency has been lifted, knowing that we may go into another, now, everybody's saying that we may, it may get worse in the fall again, and, you know, we don't know when this thing is going to end. Hopefully, there'll be a solution, a vaccine that'll work after it's fully vetted and tested. But everybody's saying that with everything that's happening, we're in for another regression once the fall happens and the winter happens. So we figured it would be at least a year just to be on the safe side and make sure that we had time to look at all of the issues around the tax lien sale.
Thank you, Senator.
Chairman Drum, can I interject?
Sure.
I agree with the comments by Senator Comrie, but another issue, and this was a huge issue when Council, when Senator Comrie and I were both in the City Council, is the water lien portion of it. And there were so many mistakes made by the city and DEP on putting people in, you know, who had leaks that they didn't know about, and then they multiplied in the amounts and it kept piling up with usurious interest on top of interest. And a lot of people got put into the tax lien sales because of unpaid water charges. Also, during this pandemic, we haven't had the opportunity to have the town hall meetings, the outreach that we normally would. Normally, the Department of Finance would reach out to us, let us know the number of properties in our district, and gave us an opportunity to have a hearing on them. That has not taken place because of the pandemic. So because of that particular situation, we thought a year from the end of the pandemic would be enough time, you know, to basically have people back on track and know which properties are potentially in danger of the foreclosure sale and being, and losing their property. So we wanted to give enough time with an outside gate, and that's why we chose a year from the end of the pandemic. And as Senator Comrie said, we don't know when that is.
Thank you. You know, a number of people, many people, believe that delaying the tax lien sale is the right thing to do, but it will cause some stress. Senator Comrie addressed that. I asked the Attorney General about that as well. But that brings me to another issue, which is the issue of the city borrowing money. Have either of you taken a stand on, in support or against the city borrowing money to get through the fiscal crisis?
We have in the Senate, we sent the indication to the mayor and to the speaker that we wanted to have a clear understanding for what the borrowing would be for, that there was a total financial plan behind it, that the City Council would send us a resolution on it as well, and that, you know, we've been also pushing hard to get the mayor to work with the unions to come up with a total financial plan and resolution on issues. We believe that there are many things that the unions can do to try to alleviate the need to borrow $5 billion, and we wanted to see that worked out as much as possible. But we are not, we are willing to do the borrowing once those things are in place and we have some clear understanding what the money was going to be used for. When it originally was presented to us, there was no explanation on how the money was going to be used or where the money was going to be used, what savings the city was going to glean, what kind of workouts would they do with the unions. We think that pension buyouts, we think the issue of looking at the health savings and the other benefit packages that are with the unions now could be a possibility to save a lot of money and actually, actually could get better plans as well. So we wanted to see all of that in place, but I can tell you that as a Senate body, we were not, we were not rejecting the need to borrow money because we're on a Senate level, we're in more debt than you guys are. So we need to look at the borrowing on the Senate level as well for the entire state. But we wanted to see a total financial plan and not just a request for $5 billion with no explanation.
Okay, Assemblymember Weprin, do you want to address that?
Yes, yes, Chairman Drum. Of course, borrowing long-term for operating expenses is what got New York City into trouble in the 70s. It really should be a last resort, but right now, what we're really looking to do is get the most out of Washington. You know, there's no question that this was a national issue. New York was hit first, both the city and the state. We were the epic center at one point of the pandemic. Thank God, it's gotten, it's gotten better. We've, you know, flattened the curve and we have less than 1% for the last 30 days. But we're in our, the mess that we're in. Because of that, it really should be done in an overall plan to see what we'll get out of Washington. You know, we're not totally ruling out borrowing, but at the same time, that should probably be a last resort and be as part of an overall package. There's additional revenue that can be achieved through additional taxes and creating new taxes. I've had bills for, yeah, to bring back the commuter tax for many years, and I think that's still something that should be looked at, especially in a fiscal crisis for New York City. We've talked about a marijuana tax. If we legalize marijuana, we've been very close to that. We've talked about online sports betting, which I think is an important new revenue source that'll help the city as well as the state. So I think it should be done in an overall package, not, you know, not just by itself. So I think we'd like to see, but our first priority should be to see what we are going to get from Washington and what we're not going to get from Washington. And we all, of course, know that there is an election around the corner, and that could change the whole picture as well.
And I know you mentioned that borrowing got us into some trouble in the 70s, but I think also we did some borrowing after 9/11, and that was what helped us get out of the situation right after 9/11, if I'm not mistaken.
That is true. And if we do borrowing, it should be done on an emergency basis and possibly, you know, on a limited basis. But yes, borrowing could be part of the package, but it should be part of an overall package, not in a vacuum by itself.
Okay, thank you. And for Senator Comrie, you happen to also be the sponsor of Senate Bill 8122, which led to the introduction of Intro 2039, which this committee is also hearing today. As we mentioned, that legislation authorizes the extension of the application deadline for certain property tax exemptions until July 15th. What led you to realize that this was a problem that needed to be addressed? And would you support a permanent extension to this deadline?
Yes, I would support a permanent extension to the Yes, I would support a permanent extension to the deadline. You know, it's the same situation. We have people that are struggling right now because of the pandemic that have lost income, that, you know, have, that have been sick. You know, if you look at the properties in question, it's in the same areas that have had the highest losses due to COVID-19, that have been in the most impoverished areas in the city, you know, that are struggling to make ends meet. So, you know, we wanted to create some relief for these homeowners. Again, you know, it's the same situation with the tax lien sale. These are people that are invested in the city in a real way by investing in their small businesses and in their homes. And we wanted to create this opportunity to give them some relief. And so they're not, you know, they seem, the city is picking on the lowest hanging fruit, the people that can't go anywhere, the people actually contributing to the city in the most essential way by creating the opportunities for people to be able to move in around in the city, to be able to eat in the restaurants. These are the essential workers that are struggling to try to get by. So, you know, we thought it was important to do that bill as well. And I want to thank the city council for wanting to pass that resolution as well. I can assure you that we have great support in both the Assembly and the Senate for both these bills that we're pushing today and also the other resolution as well. But it's important that, you know, we also take a larger look at how we deal with property issues in the city. Beyond that, Councilmember Carnegie and Miller and Adams have been, you know, in the forefront of dealing with the issues of our tax levy and how the taxes are even assessed in the city. I've been part of a lawsuit pushing the city to relook at how they even assess property taxes in the city. Because again, those same neighborhoods are paying higher percentages in property taxes than anywhere else in the city. So there's an insidious effort targeting people that don't have the ability to understand what they're going through with the highest taxes, the quickest turnaround as far as going after them if they can't pay, and also property theft. So we really need to take a look at this together in both, all three branches of government to try to push back and change what's going on here. Because this is the biggest transfer of property that's happening to the minority community, and we have to stop the bleeding.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Before I go to other questions from committee members, I want to say that we have been joined by Councilmember Gibson and Van Bremer, and also that the administration has submitted written testimony in support of Intro 2039. And that testimony is on the council's website. So with that, let's go to Councilmember Carnegie.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Drum. Thank you to the Senator, the Assemblymember, the Assemblymember for the great work that you're doing on the state level. Also, obviously, thank you to Tish James. I just wanted to add that, you know, this is a, I've said this a thousand times, this is a three-legged stool. There's the tax lien, there's deed theft and deed fraud, and there's been the use of the third-party transfer program that have conspired to actually do more displacement to homeowners than anything else in the city. And you've already mentioned that these are black and brown homeowners. So I just want to not ask a question, but thank you for your diligence. And it's a perfect example of how relationships between our city and state colleagues, I have the pleasure of sharing a great relationship with my state colleagues, how important that is. So for those of you who are struggling through your relationships with the state colleagues, this is a perfect example of how it works when we all conspire to do what's in the best interest of our constituents. So Senator Comrie, Assemblymember Weprin, and obviously, public, obviously Attorney General Tish James, thank you so much for your work. I look forward to continuing to partner with you to do what's in the best interest of our small homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carnegie. And having worked with all three of our folks that gave testimony this morning, I can attest to the fact that working together is what works the best. So thank you very much. That's it for questioning, and we're going to now move on to a public testimony. I'm going to ask committee counsel to call up those who are going to give public testimony. Thank you again.
Chairman Drum, I just want to take another minute to thank all of you council members. And again, just to echo what Councilmember Carnegie said, you know, working together and continuing to collaborate is the best thing to make sure that our homeowners and our citizens are protected. So thank you, Councilmember Drum. Thank you, Councilman Adams, and all of the council members. Stay safe, have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
As we move on to the rest of the witnesses, please be advised that you will have three minutes for your testimony. We ask that you please wait for the sergeant-at-arms to tell you when your time begins. The sergeant will then let you know when your time is up. We will now hear from Rosemarie Cantano, followed by Jacqueline Griffin and Julian St. Patrick Clayton. Ms. Cantano, you may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Drum, council members. Can you hear me? Okay. Chair Drum, council members and staff, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the passage of Resolution 1387, which would ban the New York City 2020 tax lien sale until one year after the COVID-19 state of emergency has been lifted. My name is Rosemarie Cantano, and I am the Associate Director of the Consumer Protection Unit at the New York Legal Assistance Group, a nonprofit law office dedicated to providing free legal services in civil matters to low-income New Yorkers. NILAG uses the power of the law to help New Yorkers in need combat social and economic justice. I've had the privilege of representing New York City homeowners in all five boroughs for the last 10 years. In fact, today is my 10-year anniversary at NILAG. I am constantly amazed at the spirit and sense of community among these homeowners. Many of these individuals have spent their entire lives investing in their homes and building their communities. Many of them are people who came to this country and to New York for their American dream and achieved it. They worked hard, often two or three jobs, and grew their wealth in the form of homeownership. They struggled every month to make their mortgage payments and finally arrived at a place where their homes were owned, free and clear of any debt. They managed to pay their taxes and other home expenses even amid the rising costs of living in New York City. But this took everything they had. Then COVID-19 changed their lives and finances overnight. Many of the homeowners affected by the tax lien sale are senior citizens on fixed incomes who rely on family members to assist them financially, including paying the real estate taxes on their homes. In addition, they rely on renters and roommates to help make these payments. However, because so many people have lost their income during this pandemic, many of these individuals who were relied on now find it impossible to keep assisting our senior citizens who have found themselves in a terrible situation. Even for those who are not seniors, the loss of income from closed businesses has left them using every penny they have for such necessities as food and unfortunately medically, excuse me, unfortunately, medical and even funeral costs that have been incurred during this pandemic. Another result of this pandemic has been the separation of these homeowners from many of the services which would normally be available to assist them. Normally, organizations such as NILAG would spend the few months preceding the tax lien sale, reaching out to homeowners, attending outreach events, assisting them with payment plans, requesting exemptions from the tax lien sale, or applying for available grants to help keep their liens from being sold. All of these efforts were not possible due to the inability to congregate because of the virus. Virtual events did not reach anywhere the number of people our live events did. Often, these individuals do not have the technology or know-how to work with us in this virtual space. They couldn't walk into the Department of Finance office to ask for options. It's no secret that the tax lien sale has a disparate impact on communities of color, immigrant communities, and those who have historically struggled to amass wealth and financial security. According to an analysis by the Coalition for Affordable Homes, liens sold for one to three families in 2016, New York City is six times more likely to sell a lien in a majority-black or African-American neighborhood and twice as likely in a neighborhood Latinx or Hispanic. It's important to remember that these are not people who just do not want to pay their taxes. These are people who through hard work and dedication have paid off their homes. These are the people who lay awake at night worrying about how they're going to pay their bills. The truth is, their taxes are still going to be paid. They're not asking for tax forgiveness or any kind of free pass. They simply are asking that their tax debt not be sold to an investor who will charge them excessive interest rate and high legal fees from the start. I have seen a $2,000 tax lien become a $4,000 tax lien overnight. Payment plans are rarely offered, and the law doesn't provide all the safeguards in tax foreclosures which are afforded to mortgage foreclosures. For these reasons, NILAG strongly supports delaying the 2020 tax lien sale until one year after this emergency has ended. As the day the emergency ends, everyone is not going to be back into a good financial point. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this important and timely issue. I look forward to working with the council to ensure that hard-working homeowners are protected in the wake of this pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to our next witness.
Time starts now.
We will now hear from Jacqueline Griffin.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jacqueline Griffin. I am a Senior Staff Attorney in the Brooklyn Office of Legal Services NYC. I want to echo Rosemarie's comments that when it comes to the consequences of this lien sale, they are falling most heavily on homeowners who have long invested in their neighborhoods. These are largely senior citizens on fixed incomes, and these are largely families of color. And I'd like to talk a bit just about sort of even pre-COVID, what our office is seeing in terms of the consequences of the tax lien sale. Basically, because the tax lien sale is, the list of tax lien sale candidates is a public document, it's very easy for anyone who is seeking to target these individuals to know which homeowners in which neighborhoods are in financial distress. And they are often subject to incessant calls, mailings, visits from investors that are seeking to buy their homes at discounted prices. And because of the confusion surrounding the lien sale, including the fact that DEP and DOF have very separate systems for how to get off of the lien sale and exemptions that people are entitled to, because of that confusion, it's very easy for these homeowners who are already in financial distress to fall prey to predators. And one of the most common scams that we are seeing in our office these days is the targeting of properties that remain in the name of deceased ancestors. And so an investor who sees someone's home on a lien sale list will contact potential heirs to that property. These are typically people that are living out of state with no connection to the property and who are in, and they basically tell them a story about how they are in danger of being responsible for the delinquent debt. And they convince them to sell their supposed interest in the property for pennies on the dollar. The investor will then seek to both harass and sell the home through a partition action so that they can get the resident homeowner out of the property. And for us as advocates, we are both litigating these cases in court, but we are also having to remove them from the lien sale list year after year until we can get their names back on the property. And so just the cycle of having these liens sold repeatedly is causing a lot of harm to mostly black and brown communities. And it's important to note that while these deed thieves have the title to the property, that there are charges that are accruing on the property that would not otherwise be there. So if there is an LLC on the property, then homeowners are not going to be able to get their exemptions. They are going to be subject to property taxes at a higher rate. And DOF does not provide any remedy on the back end, any retroactive benefit for these homeowners who are litigating to save their homes as victims of deed theft or deed fraud.
Fired?
Can you wrap up quickly, please?
Sure, thank you so much. I mean, obviously, we appreciate the legislation that is in front of the council at this point. But the truth is, is that low and middle-income communities are disappearing, and the annual lien sale exacerbates that. Of course, it's going to all be made worse by COVID. But this is destabilizing neighborhoods. People are being stripped of their equity. They're losing their homes. And there's, you know, a basic question of who we're going to protect here. Are we going to protect our vulnerable seniors? Are we going to protect our disabled people? Are we going to protect these intergenerational homes that are keeping rents low and participating in government programs that house vulnerable children and their families? So it's really a question, sort of the devastating effects of the foreclosures that would come from a lien sale, particularly at this time, would have really horrifying effects for communities of color largely.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony, and thank you for wrapping up. And we'll go to our next person. Thank you.
We will now hear from Julian St. Patrick Clayton, followed by Tenying Yangsel and Yasen Estrella.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Chair Drum. Thank you to the members of the Committee on Finance for holding today's hearing. My name is Julian St. Patrick Clayton. I am the Deputy Director on Policy and Research for the Center for New York City Neighborhoods, where we promote and protect affordable homeownership in New York so that middle and working-class communities can thrive in strong communities. Given the short amount of time I have available, I'm going to focus on a few key issues, but I will direct interested parties to my written testimony for further detail. So first, the tax lien sale will hurt New York City homeowners, tenants, and communities. We find that 87% of the roughly 4,600 homes on the 2020 sale are in the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens. And we estimate that at least half of those are owner-occupied. We saw that in prior sales, like in 2019, the sale of tax class I properties were over 10 times more likely to be located in majority-black census tracts than in majority-white census tracts. For a second point, the lien sale revenue was comparatively minuscule. From a city revenue perspective, lien sales generated about an average of $87 million between 2015 and 2019, while property tax collection during that time was roughly $25 billion. And to put that into perspective, in fiscal year 2019, the city's property tax revenue was about $28 billion, which was 459 times higher than the net lien sale revenue for that year of $61 million. Next, the, if there's no proper outreach, there should be no lien sale. In previous years, the Department of Finance has conducted extensive research, excuse me, has conducted extensive outreach to ensure that property owners both understood the lien sale and could take steps to address it. However, as noted, due to COVID-19, the DOF's organized virtual events have had limited impact because only a fraction of the homeowners have been reached. We saw that of the roughly 9,600 properties on the lien sale eligibility list published in July, only 562 were removed by August 17th. And a very important point, other cities comparable to New York City have moved away from the lien sale. Both Philadelphia and Baltimore both suspended their lien sales, their water lien sales, out of concern that they would be penalizing the most vulnerable homeowners. And most notably, in Cook County, home to Chicago, the treasurer ordered the indefinite postponement of lien sales on the grounds that, quote, "holding the lien sale, excuse me, tax sale under these circumstances would be unfair to tens of thousands of homeowners who are living paycheck to paycheck and as we face this pandemic." Citing, all right. We applaud the Councilmember Adams for putting forward this resolution. And the co-sponsors, we are in favor of the introduction 2039. And looking ahead, we ask committee to consider removing homeownership units from the lien sale altogether and keep them under the city's purview. We welcome the opportunity to work with Department of Finance, Chair Drum, and the committee to ensure that the lien sales do not further stabilize our communities. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Can you just go over those numbers again? You said $25 billion in tax revenues. Over what period of time versus how much income from lien sales?
Sure. So in fiscal year 2019, the city's property tax revenue was estimated to be $27.9 billion, which was 459 times higher than the net lien sale revenue of $61 million.
$61 million, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No problem at all.
We will now hear from Tenying Yangsel, followed by Yasen Estrella and Erin Weber.
Time starts now.
Good morning, Chairman Drum, Councilmember Adams, and all the ST members of the Finance Committee. Thank you for hearing my testimony and for all that you are doing for the homeowners of New York City. My name is Tenying Yangsel. I am a foreclosure prevention housing counselor at CHIA Community Development Corporation. CHIA works to build the power, housing stability, and economic well-being of South Asian and Indo-Caribbean communities in New York. And we work extensively with constituents in many of your districts. CHIA supports Resolution 1387, and we implore the city council to pass it, especially in regards to class I properties. Every year, CHIA conducts outreach to South Asian and Indo-Caribbean community members on the tax lien sale list. We typically find several hundred class I properties with South Asian owners facing a tax lien sale, mainly in the districts mentioned above. Our staff then travels throughout Queens to knock on doors and speak directly to homeowners on the list. What we find through the outreach is very concerning to us. While some homeowners know about the issue, we often find many homeowners who are not aware that they are on the list. we often find many homeowners who are not aware that they are on the list. In many cases, the homeowner does not speak English and cannot understand the letters that they receive about the overdue taxes. When we were able to reach homeowners, we invite them to our office and explain their options to them. They are eager to get back on track, set up a payment plan, and do what they can to prevent their liens from being sold. CHIA's outreach helps dozens of homeowners each year avoid the tax lien sale and in the process avoid going down the path of rising debt and potential foreclosure. This year was different. Due to COVID-19 crisis, CHIA was unable to safely conduct the outreach that we typically do to homeowners on the tax lien sale list. While most of our work shifted to remote platforms, we were unable to access phone numbers for most of the homeowners. And a letter in the mail does not generate the same outcome as personal face-to-face interaction. It would be truly unjust to allow so many homeowners to end up in a sustainable debt because community groups like us were inhibited by an unprecedented health crisis from intervening and giving homeowners a shot at correcting their tax debt with the city. Lastly, through our community engagement, I can tell you that our clients are not irresponsible homeowners. Many of them are working-class immigrants who make meager wages and have invested all their hard work in buying a home. Many of them have been economically scarred by one financial crisis after another. They are the victims of stagnant incomes, disappearing job opportunities, and a rising cost of living. The tax lien sale puts too many of these homeowners in a position where they cannot catch up with the growing debt. Some even end up losing their home. During the greatest public health crisis and economic recession of our time, I think it's our responsibility as a city to give homeowners a chance to catch their breath and postpone the 2020 tax lien sale. Thank you.
Time is fired.
Thank you. Where do you do this outreach?
We do it in Queens, all of our constituents. We have two offices, one in Jackson Head and one in South Richmond Hill.
I've never seen it in Jackson Heights, so I was wondering where you do the outreach.
Yeah, I can get back to you about specific places. We look through the list.
And how many, how many people do you outreach to? Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, I was unmuted. So I am new to CHIA. I haven't done it from last, I joined this year. So we have done, I think we look at the list, tax lien sale list, and then we identify homeowners who are South Asian and Indo-Caribbean, and then go through them, the list.
Okay, because we look at, you know, I'm in your, I'm the council member for your district. And we go through the list. Do you know how many are in Jackson Heights?
I don't know right now. I can get back. You said forty something, yes, for Jackson Heights.
I would be very interested to see or know the number of homeowners that you do outreach to, particularly in my district, and if you have statistics on the other districts as well. And also, are you a paid employee of CHIA?
Yes, I am a foreclosure prevention counselor.
Okay, and then the funding, the funding for the position, where does that come from?
I am, I can get back to you about that. We can have our, CHIA can get back to you about that.
Okay, because I have not seen that work in the neighborhood, but I certainly would be interested in having those questions answered.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, let's go to our next person.
We will now hear from Yasmin Estrella, followed by Erin Weber and Jan Lee.
Time starts now.
Good morning, everyone. Let me, thank you for the opportunity to testify. Thank you Chair Drum, and thank you to also all my colleagues at the Coalition for Affordable Homes for the advocacy and also the rest of the council members. My name is Joseline Henau Estrella, and I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Housing Services of Queen CDC. We provide the tools at NHS of Queens for low-to-mothered-income Queens residents to be able to buy, keep, and maintain their homes. And it's very appropriate, and we wholeheartedly support and applaud the efforts to postpone the tax lien and also the leadership, under the leadership of Councilwoman Adams in introducing Resolution 1387. This is a small yet a significant step in the right direction to help our LMI homeowners who have been the backbone of our communities. We have seen at this point that districts and that has been the center of the epidemic, of this pandemic. We have seen how even before this pandemic, our clients that were living on the edge. Now, without proper safetiness and programs, they are now at, they are, the future may be unforeseen. So we applaud, and we really wholeheartedly also look for a more comprehensive plan for both at the federal, for both from the federal, the state, and also the council to continue to provide, like, other cities to provide much critical programs and look for solutions. Like I mentioned, this is a step, a small step, yet significant for our clients. Most of our clients that we serve are brown and also African-Americans. And also, many of them are seniors. As we, our offices, we all try to equip ourselves with the, to work remotely. We also find that the most vulnerable are, were also very hard time due to the lack of technology or and also literacy to be able to reach narrowly our office for our services. So that will give, this will give a, that will give them time to look for, to apply and also to look for solutions. So we applaud, and we thank also all of our colleagues, and we urge the council to pass the resolution in the city council. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Yasmin, and I really appreciate all of the work. You know, so many people have come to my office to thank me or our staff for referring them over to your organization. And every single one of them gets the individualized help that they need. I also appreciate that you go through all of the tax lien sale list. And when you come in to see us for, you know, a discussion on what's happening in the neighborhood, you can provide us with all that information. So I'm very grateful to you for being on top of all that and for the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It takes a village, and it takes all of us in the community to work together to really provide comprehensive assistance to the backbone of our neighbors. And our neighbors are key, and we need to make sure that we have, that we have programs available for them. So thank you for your leadership as well.
Thank you. Okay. Let's now go to our next person, please.
We will now hear from Erin Weber, followed by Jan Lee and Ann Korchak.
Time starts now.
Everybody, hello, Finance Committee. Thank you so much for your hard work and leadership. Small property, I'm a small property owner in East Harlem with a storefront and rent-regulated residential tenants. And the big question is, how can tax lien sales occur during an eviction moratorium? This would be very destructive to small, working-class property owners such as myself. We have always been financially responsible. The rule of thumb is keeping one year's worth of taxes in your savings and reserves. We paid July taxes in full despite the shutdown of commercial businesses and the loss of rent income, which was over 65% during that time period for us. Taxes were paid straight out of our savings and reserve account, which was meant for capital improvements and emergencies. There's a huge hole in our budget, and we cannot sustain to pay taxes in full again in January. We fear a tax lien sale on our property in many like hours. A tax lien sale would wipe out all the hard work and sacrifice of my family that took generations to achieve. So I want to thank the Finance Committee for your leadership again and taking this seriously. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much. Can you just describe the loss of income a little bit more in terms of your tenants? What that's looked like? Did you say 65% or something like that? Can you just, yeah, are you muted? I can't hear you. Yeah, you're muted.
Okay, yeah, here we go.
Okay, good. All right.
Yeah, the shutdown of the commercial tenant, which comprises over 55% of our rent, was lost right off the bat during that time period.
So that's really had a very detrimental effect on you.
Yep, and paying taxes as per normal left a big hole in our budget, and it's going to take years to make it back up.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for your testimony. I appreciate you taking the time to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'll hear from Jan Lee, followed by Ann Korchak and Abraham Gross.
Time starts now.
Good morning, committee members and Chair Drum. My name is Jan Lee. I'm very disappointed that we don't have representation from the mayor's office here today. My family has owned the same tenement buildings in Chinatown for 96 years, the tenement that I call home. In 96 years, my Chinese-American family has housed countless individuals and businesses. We were here for them when racism bound our tenants to the confines of our community. From the days of the Chinatown Bachelor Society to the 21st century, we've successfully created stability in the lives of immigrant families, students, and seniors for three generations. We are our community assets. But like many thousands of small property owners, some in Chinatown, we could never have foreseen the pandemic that would strip away our savings and our emergency fund. The backbone of our buildings, our restaurant tenants, which employ many, many people, were forced to close for months, and now they're relegated to seating two people at a time outdoors. The income just isn't there. We are trying our best. We dug deep to sustain our own family. And when our friends got sick and some have died, still, we did grocery runs to the food pantry for our tenants. And we made rent concessions where we could. The lien sale needs to be canceled. It's simply immoral to expect thousands of small property owners to be bound by draconian laws that historically plunge families into financial ruin to fill a budget gap that amounts to nothing more than chasing a penny in a hurricane. Investors should never be allowed to profit from our COVID-19 misery. Is that what we want? To keep this feature of city government, a vestige of the Giuliani administration? Why would this council do that in 2021? Property owners are less capable now than we were in March, and this council must acknowledge that. By voting to support 1387, I want to applaud all of you for the attention that you have given this. This is very serious.
I was going to say, thank you very much, Jay. And your emotion, I think, represents the emotion that anybody who feels or sees themselves, I should say, on the tax lien sale list. Your family particularly being here for 96 years in that building, and your emotion is felt by us very, very much. So, thank you.
Thank you. The process has been very, very frustrating, Chair. Going to the Department of Finance on Friday, I didn't find out until 3:30 from the tweet from the mayor, but I just want to let the folks know that the Department of Finance is in no way prepared to process these lien sale applications. We did not receive a payment plan. We are still trying to work with the city, but I want to, I want you to understand from firsthand experience, the Department of Finance is in no way prepared and likely will not be prepared come January or even after. So I applaud all the politicians who have put so much work into this. Thank you so much.
I'd like you to reach out to me. Yeah, okay, I'd like you to reach out to me at drum, D-R-O-M-M, at council.nyc.gov, and give me some specifics about your case, and I'm going to look into it further, okay?
I appreciate you very much, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now hear from Ann Korchak, followed by Abraham Gross and Deborah Ack.
Time starts now.
I'd like to thank the council members that put forward Resolution 1387. My family has been a multifamily landlord for nearly 80 years. We provide housing for 20 families on the Upper West Side in District 6. 40% of our tenants are rent-regulated. Most years, approximately a third of my rent roll goes back to the city as property tax. This year, because of higher vacancies and rent concessions, nearly 50% of my rent roll will be used to cover taxes. If we don't see a rebound in 2021, we could be on the next lien sale list. As the COVID crisis drags on, it's becoming very clear that not only tenants are vulnerable, but small landlords are as well. Small owners provide a large percentage of the rent-regulated housing stock, and we don't have the benefit of a huge portfolio that would allow us to weather a protracted, tough economic crisis. By postponing the lien sale until one year after the COVID-19 state of emergency has been lifted, you will allow small owners, like my family, to navigate this unprecedented crisis. In turn, you are allowing a sector that is providing a sizable portion of the city's affordable housing to remain stable. Ownership stability and tenant housing stability are very much connected. And therefore, I ask the city council to pass this resolution. Thank you very much.
And thank you also. It's really important that we hear from people like you. Thank you.
Yes.
We will now hear from Abraham Gross.
Time starts now. Abraham, you are muted.
Jeremy?
Yep.
Yeah.
Starts now.
Councilmember Drum, the proposal, the legislation pertains to extending property tax abatements. My name is Abraham Gross, and my testimony is about the humanitarian crisis and unfathomable cruelty that I and millions of other low-income New Yorkers face as a result of abuse and mismanagement of tax abatements. In particular, the 421A tax abatement. For the past 353 days, I have been battling homelessness on and off, more than 180 days have been during the pandemic crisis. The pain and the suffering inflicted on me and millions of other applicants is completely unnecessary. By clear and convincing evidence, the 421A tax abatement is a massive corruption scheme. In May 2020, HPD, which manages the tax abatement, admitted at an official press release that out of 74,000 applicants to the subject property, 99% were rejected, except that 60% of the tax abatement apartments went to egregiously ineligible candidates who either owned property at estate, sometimes worth millions of dollars, or were family and friends. The Department of Investigations has substantiated the heart and soul of my allegations, mainly that the tax abatement 421 apartments are going to egregiously unqualified members of society, including HPD executives. I have reached out to many council members who are on this call. 90% of them simply ignored my attempts to establish some form of human contact. One in particular, who was on this call and appears not to be on this call anymore, when I came to her office, she recognized this was a serious problem and that HPD has a history of wrongfully rejecting people from tax abatements, affordable housing. She promised to help. Then she refused to respond to my calls. She missed a scheduled meeting, and she completely ignored me. When I went to her office, I was told by her chief of staff, "The best thing you could do is to go into a public shelter." As it turns out, by an investigative journalist's findings, that same council member, at the same time she hung me out to dry, moved in to the luxury affordable complex adjacent to the one I was rejected from after being approved and managed by the same, by HPD and the same marketing agent. Respectfully, is this the level of public integrity that New Yorkers could expect? Were 90% of the council members that get an email from someone saying, "I've been homeless during the pandemic. I've been wronged." I've been wrongly rejected." Please respond, ignore. And the one council member who is in her district promises to help, but then instead of helping, she hangs out the constituent to dry and moves in to an apartment that was not on the market. I know this might seem too far-fetched, but this is the reality that I and millions of other applicants for the 421A affordable housing tax abatements deal with. And respectfully, if you look at the Webster Dictionary, you look under the world, the word evil, it's defined as morally reprehensible. It is morally reprehensible that a law-abiding citizen is tortured and abused. And by clear and convincing evidence, this is only happening because of corruption and greed. And by clear and convincing evidence, council members, instead of doing their job and protecting the public interest, have been bribed with luxury housing. And that, that is my reality. I'd be so grateful if, you know, you and any other public official of integrity would actually reach out to me. And, you know, I just want to emphasize, I'm speaking not only for myself, but I've met at least eighty-six other people with my exact same condition, and some of them are in the third-party transfer tax abatements. The problem is that there is no oversight, that public officials treat public property like it's their own, and council members don't feel a moral obligation to help their constituents by intervening and stopping this egregious corruption. Thank you.
Hey, Abraham, thank you very much. And you can always reach out to us, you know, at our email address, again, drum@council.nyc.gov. But I have to say, if you're with, if the Department of Investigations is looking at this case, then we need to let that proceed and then see what the results or the findings are there.
Can I respectfully respond to that, please?
Yes.
Okay. The Department of Investigations confirmed the information in March. They have done nothing since. These apartments, more people have been given egregiously ineligible apartments. As it turns out, Department Investigation, investigators who are working on this case are also part of the problem. They too have received luxury affordable housing. This is known because of their credit report. And when this fact was protested, each and every one of those investigators simply removed that apartment from their housing records. It's sort of a widespread city corruption scandal, which, you know, I'm looking at you. You might be thinking, hey, this guy is crazy. This guy is not crazy. The evidence is there. But the problem is, anyone who causes trouble, like if you were now to look into this, you would be offered a luxury apartment, no questions asked. And it turns out, it's hard for public officials to turn down an offer, hey, here's a $2 million apartment.
Abraham, you're talking about corruption. So I need to stop it here because I don't know the allegations and I don't know the details of certain things. So why don't you email me, and then we can move on from there? And like I said, the apartment investigation, that's our investigatory agency. We'll have to go a little bit with that, but email me and we'll follow up with you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
We will now hear from Deborah Ack, followed by Albert Scott and Hannah Anushe.
Time starts now.
It appears that Ms. Ack might have jumped off the Zoom, so we will proceed with Albert Scott, followed by Hannah Anushe.
Time starts now.
Hi, hi, good morning, everyone. My name is, my name is Albert Scott, and I'm a longtime resident of East New York and a steering committee member of East New York Community Land Trust. I just would like to say, I am in total support of this resolution. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Adams and others for taking the initiative and making this a true issue. This matters to Black and Brown homeowners in East New York, especially the portion of East New York that does not have any council representation because it's been, that seat, the thirty-seven council district has, seat has been vacant since January 2020, and their district offices have been closed. So there has not been residents and homeowners that may not have, technology is unable to at least go to a district office. In addition to that, would just like to say again, our district is highly impacted by the lien sale than any other community in New York City. The thirty-seven council district is number one. And by going forward with the 2020 lien sale, the city is allowing also Wall Street investors to exploit the economic turmoil that families in my community are facing right now. And this is not right. And this is why I'm so appreciative of this resolution as a good next step forward. However, what we definitely are looking at is after this. It's very important that we look to reform this tax lien sale program. This program was started by Giuliani. And this, we understand also that this program sunsets in December of, December of this year, 2020. And it's very important that the city council definitely look at, start paying attention, start looking at reforming this program. And we especially, especially this committee to work, we're asking to, looking forward to work with this specific finance committee to reform this lien sale law permanently, permanently. In addition to that, East New York Community Land Trust will be following up with this committee to talk about reforming the lien sale in greater detail. And again, I just would like to reiterate, it is so important, especially communities such as East New York and Brownsville, that not only this resolution is fully supported, but then focus on reforming or getting rid of this whole tax lien system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and we appreciate your testimony and coming in today to do this. Thank you. Let's go. I think we have two more, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's correct, Chair. We will now hear from Hannah Anushe, followed by Deborah Ack.
Time starts now.
Morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good morning, Chairman Drum and members of the Finance Committee. My name is Hannah Anushe, and I'm the coordinator of the East New York Community Land Trust Initiative, and I'm on staff at Cypress Hills Local Development Corporation. Cypress Hills and East New York Council District Thirty-seven is more deeply impacted by the tax lien sale than any other district in New York City, with five hundred and twelve properties in the 2020 lien sale. Meanwhile, we do not have representation in city council until January, as steering committee member Al Scott said. Therefore, East New York Community Land Trust supports this resolution to postpone the 2020 lien sale, but we believe that this does not go far enough. We ask that the council, and especially this committee, work with us to reform the lien sale into a program that protects Black and Brown homeowners instead of hurting them and that creates affordable housing instead of pushing rent-stabilized buildings into further distress. The East New York Community Land Trust is working with a citywide coalition of partner organizations and community land trusts to reform the tax lien sale before the program sunsets this year. We ask that the Finance Committee work with us to pass reforms such as removing one-to-three-family owner-occupied homes from the lien sale and enabling CBOs and CLTs to purchase individual liens. Thank you. And also, steering committee member Deborah Ack is on the line now. I wonder if she can speak as well.
Yes, of course, and thank you for being quick and to the point. Thank you. We got it. Deborah?
Okay. Good morning, Chair Drum and Finance Committee and respective government officials and all who are present here today. First, I'd like to thank Letitia James for her moving testimony and also Mr. Lee. I'm going to try and contain myself because they had me all over the place emotionally. My name is Deborah Ack, and I'm a longtime resident of East New York and a steering committee member of the East New York Community Land Trust Initiative. I'm here to say that Black and Brown homeowners, homeowners in East New York are more impacted by the lien sale than any other community in New York City. By going forward with the 2020 lien sale, the city is allowing the Wall Street investors to exploit the economic turmoil that families in my community are facing right now. This is not right. That is why I support this resolution to postpone the 2020 lien sale. With that being said, I don't think the resolution goes far enough. The tax lien sale program started by Giuliani sunsets in December of 2020. The city council, and especially this committee, need to work with us, the East New York Community Land Trust Initiative, to reform the lien sale law permanently. We all know that the economic devastation of this pandemic will last more than a year. The East New York CLT looks forward to following up with this committee and anybody else who's interested in reforming the lien sale in greater detail. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your offer to educate us on the community land trust issue. Appreciate it. We'll reach out to you on that as well. And thank you for being our last person, I believe, to give testimony because you really wrapped it all up for us, and I appreciate that very much. And I too was moved by both those pieces of testimony. Thank you. Okay, is that it, council?
Yes, Chair. We have heard from all members of the public who registered to testify today.
Okay, just one moment. I got to pull up my directions here. Okay, thank you to everyone who testified today. As I mentioned at the start of the hearing, we will be submitting a formal letter to the administration with a list of questions regarding the two pieces of legislation that we had hoped, that we had hoped they would be here today to answer. We look forward to their expeditious response to this letter. And I will conclude today's hearing now. And one, two, three. This hearing is officially adjourned at 11:52 a.m. in the morning. Thank you to all of the staff who worked so hard.